Good evening, we are returning from executive session and reopening the meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. The school committee would like to begin this meeting by expressing our condolences to the community of Uvalde, Texas, that just experienced a school shooting at an elementary school. Details are still unfolding, but we would be remiss if we didn't at least bring that up and just our hearts are with you in Texas. I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any members of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising your hand either in person or remote. And I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Meeting laws. Do we have anyone who's making a recording this evening? Public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may sub comments from the public following a commensurate item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@famille.k12.ma.us. Do you have any public comments this evening? Seeing none, we will begin with the student advisory report.
Hi.
Hi, thank you for having me. This week is the last week of May. It's also the seniors at Falmouth High Schools last week here. Super exciting for them, they'll be missed. There are going to be senior yard signs going up, you'll see them around town. They're preparing for a senior banquet and graduation is going to be June 4th. Spring sports are wrapping up their regular seasons with some teams going to the playoffs for the state tournament. Last week sophomores took math MCAS, went pretty smoothly. And freshmen will have biology MCAS coming up in June. The month of June at Falmouth High School is going to be pretty packed. There's a freshman sophomore dance and then we're very excited about a Juneteenth Freedom Walk that we'll be holding sometime in the end of June to celebrate and commemorate. Thank you so much.
As always, thank you Anna for joining us virtually to share updates. And Carrie, the fishbowl, please.
This is from members of the eighth grade advisory group at the Lawrence School. Question is, what is going well in your school and what do you like most in your school? I have had a positive experience at our honor society. We need more clubs, we would like more sports options. This is from Landon at Morris Pond Schools in fifth grade. What would make your school life better? My school life would be better and this is a universal theme without more homework.
Okay, thank you eighth graders and fifth graders. And to our mission and vision.
Our mission. The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Vision. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you very much. And as we begin our meeting, we'd like to introduce the newly elected faculty members. Melissa Keith, our comment returns for your third term. Suzie is here for her first term. And I turn it over to you to reorganize this.
So we will first vote on the chair of the school committee.
Yes, to nominate now, we can allow us to leave us for another year. For the good year and let me just say.
One nomination. We have any other nominations?
For chair.
For chair.
All right.
Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with Margaret.
Okay, and now we'll take nominations for vice chair. Am I wrong? Can I go again? Okay, I was about to nominate Andrew Rolz to be our vice chair at least here. And as our second. And we'll call a vote, we will begin on this side. Mike.
Just point of order, do you want to open up any nominations? Not that I have any.
Thank you Mike, appreciate that. Any other nominations for vice chair?
Helen, yes.
Jeremy Madiers, yes.
Yes.
Melissa Keith, yes.
And now with Ken Apples, also a yes. Congratulations. And now nominations for September.
Can I roll into your role?
No, how about it?
May I nominate Melissa Keith, please?
Yes. Is there another nomination for September? Seeing none, roll call, Margaret. Well, yes, sorry.
Helen, yes.
And Ken Apples, also a yes. So thank you. Yes, I just really appreciate people that take on these roles because it's a lot of work. Chair especially. Definitely vice chair and all your emails. And Melissa, I just really appreciate that people take it to heart. You do such a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And can I make a comment about the outgoing vice chairman? I hope she will need her template for answering. I mean, it sounds cold-hearted, but she does have such a good template of way to answer quickly and easily.
It's in good hands, okay. Next presentation of career vocational technical education, CBT.
We might need you to add a little moment, I'm going through Zoom updates, I'm having a hard time getting the presentation to. To the screen. Thank you for bearing with us, it just took a couple of minutes there because Zoom decided tonight was the need to update. So thank you for allowing Henry and myself to share some updates and information with you regarding our career vocational technical education program at Falmouth High School. And this is a logo that was created by our students in our graphic design program or design of visual communications. And it's now pretty proudly displayed at the student entrance, just outside the assistant principal's office. So it's regularly passed and viewed and our students are reminded of the programming opportunities available to them. So as we get into the conversation, just a reminder, and historically when we presented to you, we started with six programs. We officially added television broadcasting, thank you Mr. Webber, that's our seventh program. And this evening we're going to be talking to you about eight with the addition of our food justice initiative and the race food and climate program. So sharing a little bit of an update on where that program is in its launch. And then talking a little bit through how a program is designated, the requirements that students have to demonstrate as they pass through the programs or pathways. And then we want to talk a little bit about what we're currently doing for support of our programs. A little bit about how we envision the future and our programs continuing to grow and how that's supporting our students. And finish off with just talking a little bit about our instructional leadership for the program. This is where I should have learned from Mr. McMenon, I just hit the button three times, so we'll see how fast the slides move. This is, the vision statement that you see here in front of you is a vision statement for our CBT program that is created by our team of instructors alongside Henry C. Trulli. And you created that a little over a year ago, right?
Yeah, actually, yeah. Always updating because we're always making changes.
And so what's important in the vision statement and they folded key terms is that it's balancing what we understand to be comprehensive education and fleshing it out with these opportunities that our students have to experience career and to experience technical programming, but also to earn technical certifications. So we're going to talk a little bit about that as we go through. And to really prepare them not just for college and career readiness, but community readiness and engagement in the workforce in particular. Really trying to call it opportunities for students within our local community to help them see themselves stay here as the future of Falmouth. So we have three designations for our CBT programs. Two of our programs are designated as chapter seventy-four. They've got that level of federal and state designation, they can receive funding and support in the same way that a program at a vocational school does. That's the level of certification or recognition that a vocational program has. We have five of our programs that are then recognized as Perkins-supported. That tends to be the more common program designation in comprehensive high schools. So it gives them access to federal funds through the Perkins grant system. However, it doesn't necessarily raise the level of designations, the chapter seventy-four programs. There's a couple fewer requirements around work-based study and relationships with employers. And then the last of them is sort of the direction we're going in creating the food justice program, which is more of a hybrid design where they're blending multiple of the CBT frameworks in order to work around a more focused mission on ratio and social justice. And in this particular case, blending from agriculture, some of the work around horticulture. And I'm missing the third one. And the social studies department, and we've also brought our science department. So here they are in list form by name. So design of visual communications, which we affectionately call a graphics program. Early education and care, which we affectionately call our FHS preschool, are the two that elevate to the chapter seventy-four level. Perkins-supported, so we support our business marketing, our carpentry or woodworking program, computer programming and web development, culinary, television broadcasting, and finally the hybrid design that we're enrolling for now. Eighty-four students so far have expressed interest in the course, which is pretty remarkable. It's a balance between first choice and alternative choice. But hoping that we were going to see twelve to eighteen when we set up, we see eighty-four present is pretty remarkable.
Leaders came in and they came through the school and they really promoted it. So I think it's really good to have a community effort to say, this is what we want. So that's why it couldn't fit a seventy-four of Perkins because there's so many interests that wanted to be blended. So nothing could fit in there, so it's really comprehensive. So I'm really, I'm really excited about that. Do you want to say this today? There's a stressful, stressful point in your life, go to a pre-school graduation. And all words go away, all words.
So in order for a student to complete one of the eight pathways at Falmouth High School, they have to successfully complete two years' worth of coursework. Most of our courses are broken down into semesters, so a student takes one course and the following different course in the spring. We have a couple of advanced courses where students take the course year-long and they have sort of a job opportunity that's embedded within that, so they commit to their program, they're usually in their last year of study. So for example, in the graphic design and our design of visual communications, the students may take on clients, help them design a logo, help them choose colors, help them do a layout, and even bring them right up through the printing and publication process. Engaging in those real-world experiences like taking on clients and earning a technical skill certification. So this is a look at the summary across the seven programs. With our new program coming on next year, we have yet to determine what the technical skill may be that the students should be certified in, but this is a summary of how our students are credentialed prior to graduating when they complete the pathway. So whether students are earning Adobe, which is an industry-recognized certification in graphic design, are preschool students, that sounds funny. High school preschool students. For an EEC certification and they're readily employable in the community in care centers upon high school graduation. Many of them do as we're tracking their graduation and what they're choosing to do for post-secondary either study or career. They are continuing in the field of education. Some look to older grades, but they are persisting and building off of their foundation in education. We do have a number who are earning OSHA certifications, either in the general industry certification like business marketing and television, TV, video production. And then in our construction woodworking technology group, they're earning the actual construction focus, the ten-hour entry certification. You can see Google certification. And in particular, in our culinary program, the students are earning their certificated food handler certification. So it really makes them marketable and reliable in the summer industry and workforce here now. Gives them really relevant experience and allows them to figure out whether or not this is an area in which they want to persist. And then they get, I think there's one opportunity to renew before they graduate because those are, they have a finite window before they get renewed. So huge shout out to our team of CBT teachers because when Henry and I sat down and strategized a few years ago, not all of our programs had a technical skill certification attached them. And so it was something that through the relationships that we built with Quincy Public Schools and did some site visits with them, because when we talked to Desi and said, can you connect us to a district that's got programs similar to ours? They can help answer some of the critical questions that we just didn't seem to have the right answers to. They really helped and they exchanged ideas and then they asked us and we exchanged some with them. But that was really important to our work. So when we look at the balance of support between what we're doing now and the direction we're headed, we're really excited to look at the fact that through our pathways, our students are gaining really critical skills and experience. And they're starting to take on jobs while they're employed and continuing their high school careers. But that's often in the summer or after school. So one of the pieces that's important to us is growing internships and finding our students opportunities to make sure we're placing every student who wants an internship in one. We were very fortunate that Janet Raja, well also our business marketing teacher, has historically served as our internship coordinator and she's gone out and done a number of matches in the community and tried to help students. But we're really looking to grow that to make sure every student who wants that opportunity has it. Starting to create more shop opportunities, more opportunities like in graphic design where the kids are coming in and taking in clients where they're kind of transforming the classroom to their workplace. And beginning to grow these opportunities as a focus area across our entire team. So it's not limited to the two chapter seventy-four programs, which is where that started because of the steps we needed to be recognized at that level. So we're going to take you on a journey through our programs and talk a little bit about how they meet the requirements and share some examples with you. So for our business marketing students, they're going through their process, they earn their OSHA general industry certificate, but they're learning to take on clients and through the work with clients, design for them products or logos. So this was an introduction to the four piece, the four principles of marketing. And the students, so you can see here the converse example, they had them a student work showcase earlier in the night in the hallway. And one of the things that Ms. Raja, the instructor, often talks about is she says, I've come from tripping over wires and really being restricted in my room because it's always a computer lab-oriented classroom, having the freedom to move around and create small businesses and have the students move their devices with them. So she's really been shifting from some of the focused business principles and really trying to drive towards marketing. So part of the work she wants to be able to do is open up that client base and have people come in and work with them. And you know, sort of think about how they might take the print production they want to do in graphics and get the word out and then that would be a marketing opportunity for high school students and other programs to help with. Computer programming and web design. So one of the challenges that we face is trying to increase in STEM fields are tracking around non-traditional bigender. So the Department of Education, both at the federal and state level, have indicators that we look at trying to increase the number of young women who are interested in STEM fields. And so we were looking at some of our eighth graders who had an opportunity forward to high school and explore opportunities. And in this particular STEM program, the majority of the students who are exploring it were young women looking to take on computer programming in their studies. So that's one of the indicators that we spend a significant amount of time looking at. But you can imagine that also applies to carpentry for us, they're looking at the number of young women there. And then in the preschool, one of the numbers that they consistently give us a measure each year for is the number of young men who are serving as educators or moving to be educators. Let me take you down into our woodshop. And this is one of the places where, you know, I think it's on the face easily recognizable because of some of the tools and some of the configurations that are there. But in working with Mr. Brooks and working with Henry to be really strategic about how we use Perkins funds, we've been able to start purchasing some newer equipment and thanks to Patrick and Marcel High School, we've been able to get everything outfitted and connected. We've purchased a laser engraver, so it's going to give our students some opportunities to do some different works of etching, to work with materials beyond wood and apply their skills. So when we think about the plaques that have the little main plates that you add each year, our students will be able to start taking on some of those roles and opportunities. There's a pretty incredible saw machine that was just installed and we did professional development beginning this year. So we're making sure that our students are getting experience on industry-aligned, state-of-the-art equipment because in this area and making sure that our students want to go into the construction field, but they've had exposure and they're getting that initial OSHA certification. So one of the pieces we're also exploring is maybe having our students complete the OSHA thirty, which is that next level, which would really make them even more marketable and local workplaces. And we keep stressing local because we really want to think about the future of Falmouth. What we recognize is skills are transferable and wherever our students go, they'll serve them well and hopefully keep them connected with us through our growing network here. So I don't have the graduation picture, but we've got some pictures of our students out on the playground. And we have two students who have been using their fine motor skills, they were cutting and identifying letters and spelling their names. So these are three-year-olds who are going through that process and outlining everything. I had a chance to visit the preschool last week and the energy in there is just amazing. And in some cases, each preschool student is paired directly one-on-one with a high school student learning to be a preschool educator. So they get very intense support and attention and the imaginative play. I think this is the essence of the imaginative play for our high school students. And when you see them take on the roles and get in there with our younger students, it's, that's where you go, we kind of stress a bit. And maybe you get to take on a role. We'll circle back to you if that ever gets done. So then continuing to look at how we're creating these authentic opportunities. Mr. Webber, thinking about what you're providing in the television studio. We are going through the process, I'm not sure anything's going to itself yet, of completely re-upfitting the television production studio at Falmouth High School. Making sure that we're staying current in the industry and providing for the needs of the program and of the students. So what you see here are students filming in the hallway, so live on occasion if you will, or on location. See, I don't have my jargon down yet. You see the control center and you see the students who are on set behind the windows. So that's where they film the morning news. So you can see them in there. What we couldn't capture there because of orientation, the way this picture was, trying to show you the whole picture, is also the green screen they have where they can set up and do productions. They can, they learn to project behind them and how to orient themselves. So this is the morning news. And you know, we're looking at also our students being deployed across the community, whether it's across our schools or at events in the community to apply these skills and to help create that wealth of footage and capturing nearly every event, I think, possible and open to the public to share. But then they have these opportunities. So when we think about our athletic teams and when they get that opportunity, whether they're at Gillette Stadium or Boston Garden, TD Garden, they're following along and they're right there along local cable networks and they're also filming and taking that information in. So these are the types of things where I think about some of the internships, they've got these opportunities, but coordinating that and really helping to scale some of those opportunities and making sure that everyone who wants the opportunity has it. Here's our graphic design studio. So one of the things you're missing with the way this picture is oriented is all of the large format printers that are up by the door and our students are learning to print. And they're actually starting to do t-shirt production, it's pretty incredible when you go in. But Ms. Hart and working with the students is looking to transform and create a print shop. And so this is, the picture that's featured there is a look at what a first pass at a pricing chart would be and how they could create a graphic shop. And if you want a picture printed that's sixteen by twenty, because you need to have that done, the students would do the formatting, they would make sure that nothing was overly pixelated and then they would set it to the printer and they would work with you on whether you wanted it printed on, you know, high gloss, matte. They're learning all those pieces to prepare for working in print shop settings. And then they have their t-shirt pricing now featured at the bottom. And they did a logo for the high school woodshop and printed t-shirts for the students in the shop. So it's great to see some of the interconnectedness. In our culinary program, in our kitchen classrooms, students prepared meals and gave the meals to the service center. And then the service center was able to distribute those meals. So part of the work, you know, that they're doing is not just about learning the skills in the area, but also learning about how to give back and stay connected with the community. And so when we start to think about all of the strategic objectives and the direction in which we're headed and the relationship between teaching and learning and providing access to our students and making sure that their college career and community ready. Our partnerships matter, but so this is the foundation for excellence and that's what keeps the funding and allows us to keep doing the renewal of equipment and keep things relevant and industry-specific for our students. But we also link back to our core values. We want to help our students find joy in their learning. And so that's, you know, we connect, we find joy, we go down to the preschool, we look at the examples of how our students are interconnected, but they're also cultivating that sense of community and that's why our vision is really tied to seeing them stewards of future of Falmouth. And then finding that growth and wellness through the balanced experience. So in thinking about all of that, we come back to this eighth program, the new program, our food justice initiative. And here's a picture, if I knew I could make it work, Mr. Webber created for us, there's that production in. We have a minute and fifty-seven second time lapse of the four days of installation. So I can share that link out with you separately. But over the course of four days, it's pretty cool to watch the installers arrive and then all the students, right, go through the traffic line. And then students get dismissed and then about an hour later, well, I guess it's ten seconds there, the installers leave. But it was just remarkable to watch that process go on. And we're incredibly thankful to the Falmouth Education Foundation for being able to secure and release the funding. So this hoop house is on a rail. So this hoop house is on a rail. And at all times, the center twenty feet will be covered. But it allows them to move it up and down the rail to extend the growing season. And what's really important when we think about the students are going to be doing this because of the semesterized courses, is that whether they take fall courses or spring courses, students will be able to go from seed to harvest on what they plant. And so in doing some of that work and moving it, when you think about the culinary students preparing meals and sending it to the service center, if we're stepping back and we're producing the food, then bringing it to the culinary program and then they're preparing the meals and sending it out. From seeds to consumption, our students are seeing each step of the process with the service or the social justice orientation wrapped around them. So as we build on our foundation, that's one example of moving the crops to the programs. Another one that I think is a pretty easy next step for us is building a school store where we go from the products that our students are making, which many of us look to the cutting boards on occasion, or the Adirondack chairs from our wood program, to the print and graphic materials. And just thinking about, you know, the apps that are being developed and whether or not there's a way to connect apps to individual needs and computer programming. When we look holistically across all of the programs with the marketing students, would be really excited if we can create a school store and really help to have members of the community connect with our students and have them have more purpose in some of the the work-based experiences that they're having. Also looking at increasing opportunities. One of the the pieces that keeps coming up when we look at the partnership that we have with all the greater professional community of Falmouth is the idea of an engineering pathway. And in developing an engineering pathway, following the framework from the Department of Education, the vocational system, we would be eligible for Perkins funding, which would provide additional support in building out that program. And then as a complement, both to television broadcasting, but also some of the thinking that's been batted around a little bit with our journalism team is considering whether or not a radio station would be a a great next step for students as well. So we play with the call letters all the time, but anything that's relative to W Clippers is gone. We did, we did check that out. We're looking at a site visit at Syracuse High School to see how their radio station is run. So when we think about all of this, we really kind of arrive at a rethinking a bit about the future. And the idea that our Clippers are the future of Falmouth, they're not only going to be the employees, but they may be the employers, the citizens and the leaders. And through our CBT program, we are really trying trying hard to create a balanced approach to college, career and community readiness. So our students see themselves as committed members of our community who can steward Falmouth's future. And I think that really stood out when we talked to a Falmouth High School graduate who's also advocating for the food justice initiative. And he said quite simply, the reason why this is so important to me is because I wasn't sure I could stay here. You know, as I was trying to figure out what my adult life looked like and I want to create more opportunities. And I really want to look at what the needs of our community are now. And that through our partnership and look at workforce investment board data across the Cape and Islands, because they have to sign off when we add new programs and make sure that there's a relevant workforce correlation in our community. And then also the relationship we have with the local Chamber of Commerce, both with Mr. Michael Kisparian being our general advisory chairperson, as well as our marketing teacher Janet Rocha serving as a member on the board. We're constantly looking at the trends, making sure that what we do is relevant for our students now and later. So thinking our way through all of that and trying to take the steps forward, really, these are the people who are keeping our program going and keeping us in line with the compliance requirements from DESI. So we have our team of teachers growing up to to the number of eight with the additional teacher that we hope to be able to announce soon. Our advisories, so each program has a general advisory and then they all filter up to the overall general advisory.
Parents and community members and advisors, so it's a way to keep ourselves ready, growing. And then me.
And then me. And so, you know, it's great that Henry and I see in close communication, I think whether we're on the phone or texting, pretty regularly every week, we've got some piece of this that we're looking at because we track graduates. We track technical skill attainment. We have improvement plans that we submit to the Department of Education. Sometimes what they identify as criteria that need action plans and what we identify, don't always match, so we do them all. But, you know, we are the team that's working to do that. And so with that, sometimes comes challenges. As we were going into the pandemic, the federal government reauthorized Perkins. So now the Perkins five, so every ten years they reauthorize. And this added a number of additional compliance measures and annual reporting requirements. And if we don't stay in tune with each of those, it affects our Perkins funding or access to Perkins funding. Which for a period of time, Falmouth High School had paused Perkins funding. And in the past five or six years, we've been pretty fortunate to be steady with that at about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And if we're growing programs, we can increase that. But that's certainly something that we we think about is the added compliance steps to be able to get through that in the applications, probably about twice as long as it had been under Perkins four. Looking to grow internship opportunities, it's really difficult for the teachers to be in the community securing internship opportunities. And in the classroom as we're growing courses. So as we said before, you know, we have one teacher who's been the internship coordinator. And sometimes she's also creating internships for students who aren't in the CBT pathway. An example is the students who might go through the nursing rotation or follow the hospitalist at Falmouth Hospital. So they're not necessarily coming through a pathway, although there are medical pathways and health pathways we can cover. But she's also providing those opportunities because that's their area of interest. So just trying to keep the the person power to grow those, which aligns to a deal like applied learning opportunities if we're creating a print shop, making sure that the teacher who's teaching the graphics program also has room to be supervising the print shop. And then as we're thinking about the needs assessment, that is one of the steps in the new Perkins five is that we're looking to create an annual year-over-year needs assessment. Part of that's tied to the workforce investment data and part of that's just tied to us understanding the relevance and whether or not any of our programs need to be updated or changed to the framework. And then just, I think finally, we're looking to create an authentic exploratory program so that students coming out of the eighth grade truly know all that's available to them. And then once they get to the high school, they have an opportunity to rotate through the ones that they're most interested in. So they can make an informed decision about what they want to pursue and persisting. And all of that ties together. And this is also set your place settings to our portrait of a graduate. And when we think about the identity of what it means to be a Clipper, this is everything that we're trying to help our students do. When we have these I can statements, they can say, I can do all of these. And these are the skills that whether they're the future employees or the future employers, the future citizens and the future leaders, we certainly hope that they have and they can readily apply in any novel situation. So Henry and I, thank you very much. We can answer questions. Thank you for the opportunity to share where we are and where we're heading.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments? My first one is, how many students are part of the CBT programs? What percentage of the high school? I mean, you could answer either way.
It's a high number. I don't have the exact number right now, but we're we're looking at every, every.
I'm thinking it would probably run twenty percent.
Twenty percent?
And not everyone follows the exact pathway, but they might just take a course as an elective, so.
And that still qualifies as being part of the CBT program as they're taking their elective.
It is qualified, it brings them through the program, but they don't qualify as completing the program. They have to complete the two years of study, the technical skill and have some type of applied experience. Do you know how many students do that?
So we just had a celebration and why was the number unknown? That was one ward ceremony, you have that paper? So that is, so that's a, that was a nice celebration two weeks ago and that was really good. Yeah, that was.
Graduating seniors, so that number carries over each year, yeah.
Yeah, there are seniors, but they've chosen not to celebrate. We will celebrate them next year. They'll have their time.
Students may have completed the program in the junior year, but these are students graduating.
And I also just point out, there are several students who are multiple pathways, I would hate to say. I agree, also completed other pathways as well, so yeah, they're very much involved with the program.
So can I ask two more questions? So one, one question is, are there scholarship opportunities that are specific for CBT program graduates?
That's nice. That's something that we have to explore. That that'll be something that we explore. I like the aspect that we give our students different paths to succeed. And so this is a powerful path and effort to have a scholarship that goes in, that'd be fantastic.
Right, because it would be a workforce development one or college track with with, yeah, having flexibility with that.
We do have articulation agreements with the community colleges and state schools. And our design and visual communications has one with NEIT that we periodically go through renewing. So even without scholarships, the coursework that our students complete can either have two or four credits typically weigh from their first year of study. Because they demonstrate the skills through our coursework, they honor our courses.
Okay, if they opt to go on them.
Yeah, because they continue to study there.
Yeah. And my last question is around a work-study program. So for students, you know, for some students, it is a struggle to be in school every day and to have an option of of workforce or work-study type of, is that embedded into any of the CV?
Yeah, it it's very tough because they have their schedule here, but a lot of internships are during the last two periods of class. So they can go into there, into that aspect where, and so as long as students after the the last two periods, they are employed and they can get a job and so going to summer, they're they're moving on to bigger things. Like one of the star people, I think is gonna have an internship going into the, the, what do I mean? Fully village summer job, so there there is pathways to them.
So some of them are paid internships and some of them are not.
Well, if they're in our pathways, they they're volunteer, but then they can move on after hours.
I think one of the restrictions of our schedule, because students have to be in that kind of courses every day, is that we can't realize, and I'm not sure we're actually eligible, if I remember back to the chapter seventy-four applications, the co-op. And the co-op is is that every other week, right, where during your shop week, you're actually in the job, being employed. We have some schedule restrictions, but I think we may have some eligibility restrictions, so that's something we could go back and look at. Thank you.
Yeah, I was actually gonna follow up on the same thing, that I love the idea of having scholarships that are specific for this. Because having just gone through scholarship applications, I don't remember seeing anything that was specific to any of the pathways and having a kid that is in two of them, I I would have noticed because it would have been a huge opportunity. But I don't, and I don't know how we, because we're not the ones getting the scholarships, right? So it just requires some type of partnership with those who are to acknowledge that this is a really important trip to be to be supported so that they can pursue whatever it is.
It might come out of the advisory, because the advisory, a lot of companies come in and they promote, they support. And maybe there might be a company that's supporting our, our students would want to do that. So that might be a subject matter we could bring in the fall advisory. That's.
Yeah, I I think, I think that'd be one of them. I really don't think that they could have it in the other school.
So it's funny, you were bringing up some of your concerns around some of the application and compliance around Perkins. So what do you need there in terms of supports with all that additional requirements coming from you?
So one of the things that came up both in the site visit when we were at Quincy and then subsequently, you know, we've gone to desecrating sessions and we've looked at other district models, is that we're finding in this, it's gonna come up when we have our tier focus monitoring round, which will follow the one that's ongoing now, is many schools after they have five programs have a dedicated coordinator or department head for the programs. And we sort of found that out as we were going through trying to get professional development. And it kind of brought us back to understanding why, as some of these other pieces are growing, other districts aren't feeling it the same way. So it's one of the pieces we've we've sort of found out. And in the meantime, you know, I think what happens is during designated professional development or departmenting times, we're taking steps back to the teachers to try and get information. But that's also taking time away from them planning or growing internships. So we found ways to work with it now, but I think as we're up to eight programs and we're hearing that sort of indicator coming both out of DESI and other schools, that's something that, you know, we find ourselves thinking about.
I'll add that. I am amazing, but I'm not that amazing. There are times that it is, you need someone to dedicate that and I feel sometimes I doing it to service. So I have my other duties, but clearly as this is growing and looking at it about within the state. And so that needs someone to start looking at and some scholarships, that'd be fantastic. Let's start scanning those scholarships. That would be a fantastic way to do, to deal with discipline and attendance and all of this stuff. So I would love that.
And I think that one of the things that got us there was that under Perkins four, when we reinstituted, actually securing Perkins funds, they gave us an action plan and we were able to move to the action plan. And when they went to five, we had the steps, that's where the realization of looking around at other structures. So some restructuring might be in place for that. And I think that that kind of ties into, I'm sure my other comment is how wonderful the idea of the school store. And I know that for some of these other things, you're going out and seeing what other districts are doing. And so you're, I'm sure you're aware of the school store that Nashby runs and has prime location. And just the amount of outreach they're able to do with their community, it's it's really become a win-win. So I'd love to see that come out.
Got a question, since this is amazing programs that absolutely helps develop our workforce. Would this be something that S R dollars could be applied to?
I don't think that we can do a sustainable, like program.
Yeah, be a one-time thing.
So apply it to you one time, then we'd have to figure out where. Okay, thank you.
So I also had a question or a comment about the future of the CBT school store. I can't support enough. I am on the reunion committee for my own class reunion. And part, and we're having a delayed reunion this summer. Part of our committee has asked for, I live in the Falmouth High School school store. So while I know that we have the order forms and the graphics and I know that we do have a small school store, I'm sure that I can whip a little something together there. I'm really excited for the potential of having the ability to, you know, for the public to buy things like Adirondack chairs for purchase. I know that in the past we had them, are they available currently? They are, okay, good to know. So, and then like the etching machine, you could put like the logo. I mean, those could be like, we could do everything in-house kind of thing, you know, I know that gifts for coaches and gifts for teachers, like there's so, the possibilities are endless with that new etching machine that was purchased. And then two, couple of things unrelated, was WFHS available for the radio station?
Well, we looked, it was a really narrow set of colors, but okay.
Just a question, is the nor is the daily updates of the daily news in class still called perspective? And is there a Friday show called perspective?
It's the FHS morning news. We have not been able to do perspectives, I think, going back to renovation, even if it's not then. There's another video production class right now that's inside FHS, which is more of a film studies based class that gets a producer for this year.
And then I would love to see a future look at for a nursing or health professional pathway. It is it is a sustainable profession. It is a profession that is very dominated here on the Cape. Cape Guard Healthcare is the number one employee, is has the highest employees at Cape Guard. So it would really Um, so it would really um benefit our community. So it doesn't necessarily have to be nursing, but um health careers or something along that, I would definitely love to see some more information on that.
Maybe brains and medical interpreting.
Oh, yeah, medical interpreting, that's a good one, or billing, or, you know, you don't have to get in the trenches. Um, but there's so many opportunities within like that healthcare umbrella, so.
And anytime you, you bring in something, you're thinking of a classroom plus a shop. So there's a classroom where they, where the instructor comes in there, and then the whole shop would have the, the bed or whatever. And so that's a spacing, so we're, we're always looking at, we're neat, because bringing that in won't just bring another, you know, spacing situation, but it, it would be, that's a need right now.
Yeah, it is desperately a need, and as uh, for people that are in that profession. Seeing people leave that profession in droves. Um, I think that if we can really foster that profession, um, it might be beneficial.
Thank you. Um, I have just a couple of clarifying questions, thank you both for coming. I do this for a job on the backend, so I am the community members that you're seeking, not this time. So, I, I do it for a school in Rhode Island, is there money, is there grant money per student who gets certification tests? Is that how it works?
No.
It works differently.
Yeah, so we use a portion of our Perkins fund, the federal funds.
Yeah.
To pay for um the technical skill tests, assessments that our students complete. Um, with the chapter seventy-four. There's a first team, but it's not as high as what was originally indicated by the department then. Um, so the incoming money as our students complete isn't enough to keep the programs viable, is that what you mean?
It does, but my next point, so the school I work with uh has three people. They have two internship coordinators and they have one person in charge of Skills USA and NOC Desertation Test. So, it gets to a financial standpoint where if you have so many students in it, even though the money is smaller. You can sustain it, but if you, you have shorter, so that's, that's why I asked for the funding.
Yeah.
If you had more students in it, it could actually make up this, you know, the postage stamp or whatever it is. Um, and then the last thing I will say is um, just before the pandemic, we had a high school senior who did a television video with us, this is my work. And he got a job at HBO the day after graduation, because the certification, the knowledge, and then going on, so it's a great program. Thank you very much.
Um, Phil, your hands up.
Um, and thank you for the medical portion too. And I, I work at a high school that has students that actually want to help with a certification in the medical field, so that's. I know that, I know that's possible, I don't exist, so. Um, and, and obviously, a lot of that stuff would require insurance equipment, space, so forth. Um, and, and kind of circling back to my earlier question. If you had a program or you mentioned, you know, having to keep up with the current tools that are used in the construction industry and so forth, those would be like one-time purchases? Is, is that something that we could use as?
The, the one-time purchasing things, we can put whether it's Perkins or other grants or SRS, those, those things we can solve. Um, for a municipal school district, there are not, it, this isn't self-funding on its own. It's part of all the chapter seventy ones that come into the town and part of the overall town allocation for schools. So you just make the, you make, you prioritize, right, in terms of staff.
Thank you.
And Terry.
I, people have mentioned things, I'm gonna talk about the school store, that's great, and everything, and I just remember a few years ago, it was sort of like two courses. And we're trying to get approval by DESC and all that, and you have come to an amazing, amazing far.
Teachers are amazing.
Kudos.
Teachers are amazing, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
Thanks, Tina, this is great, thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Other questions?
I know, it's very, very. Next on the agenda is to act on an eight hundred dollar donation from the Kuna Mset River Trust.
Yeah, thank you, um, so I'm gonna, uh, again, um, give a shout out to Sarah Vendetti, uh, our uh learning partnership specialist. Um, she's amazing, she's really, this is her first year and she's really made a lot of connections in our community. Um, she's um, set up um hands-on opportunities for our students. Uh, at almost every grade or at every grade through eighth, and, um, so one of, um. Today, first grade, um, uh, we're at the Shiverx Pond Experience, which was very interesting, it was great to see them looking through the microscopes and. And learning about things, we have, um, all of our second grade. Um, went to the Cape Verdean Museum of Cultural Center, which I think we talked about before. Third grade had the Earth Day um experience. Uh, fourth grade has the Green Bus Experience. And uh, our fifth grade has an experience uh for the Kuna Mset River Trust. And we do need to bus our students um to the Kuna Mset River. And uh Sarah uh is working um with uh this partner to pay for. So in essence, this is uh valued at eight hundred dollars um for the buses um that they're donating the money. Uh, and in all of these experiences, um, you know, Sarah has worked to make sure that they're embedded in classroom lessons. Uh, it's tied to the, the standards of that grade level, um, but being able to give a um. A, a hands-on experience in, in our local environment, which I think is really good.
Um, is there a motion to approve the eight hundred dollar donation from Kuna Mset River Trust? I'll make a motion, ten seconds. Any questions or comments? I would just like to make a quick comment, the treasurer of the, uh, the Kuna Mset River Trust is also a fountain high school graduate and former. Thank you. Can I just have one question?
Um, just clarification around who Sarah Vendetti is. Just who's Sarah Vendetti is.
Well, who she is, we, um, we hired her this year, she's um new, new to Fama. Uh, we have a, she's, her title is Learning Specialist Partnership. Some of that uh came out of our partnership with the Woods Hole and Greater Fama Community. Um, but she's also expanded that um to uh really make the connections of the outdoor learning. Um, so she's um, a lot of positive feedback about the work she's done.
Yeah, it's nice to see the work she's doing, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing that all in favor of approving motion to um receive the eight hundred dollar donation from Kuna Mset River Trust, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Yeah, that's, thank you. Next on the agenda is discussion and act on new law firms. So just to recap, um, at our last meeting, we interviewed four attorneys uh represented their firms. Uh, the first attorney was Mark Terry, Amir O'Connell, Attorneys at Law, and he's a general education specialist attorney. Um, the next um group were attorneys Alyssa St. Florian and Andy Wong from Murphy, Heston, and Mahane. Um, and Alyssa is specialized in special ed piece and Andy was the general um educator attorney. We also met Michael Joyce from Bell, McAvoy, and Joyce, and he's a special ed attorney. And finally, we met Paige Tobin and Caitlin Beach Mulrooney from Murphy, Lanyard, and Murphy. Um, and they are also special ed. So the reason on the agenda, you'll see, is it's firms, is we have two um courses of action. We could approve one general um attorney and then another firm to specialize in our special ed piece and cases. Or we could um look to one firm and have both attorneys um in-house. So this is the first time I think any school committee member has participated in this process. So the first thing is just a discussion of um feedback on attorneys, thoughts, attorneys got um sort of rose to the top for you. And then also I would like to open up to uh Lori and also Joan, because while the school committee is here to hire new attorneys, they will be working.
Yeah, so just a clarification, which are the firms that you both?
So the firm that does.
It's just one, right?
Yeah, it's just one, it's, it's the um Murphy, Heston, and Mahane.
Okay, yeah, and I guess this is a question for administration. So, um, I know how busy you are with your attorneys. Do you feel that it would be more helpful to have two firms represent the different needs? So I'm looking at you, Joan, of the needs that you would have. Um, and maybe the needs that you would have to run. Um, so like, seeing like the different, the different pieces, does that feel like it would be more um supportive? And less kind of looking for just one law firm to do everything, which might. I guess I'm kind of understanding my own thoughts on that too, I'm interested in your thoughts, so, sorry about that.
I mean, I think when it comes to labor, um, you certainly want someone who is, that's their specialty and that they're available to you. And so, and not stretched so thin that you can't um reach them and you can process with them. And set up systems also to avoid problems as well. So I would say that when it comes to labor law, we want someone, that's their specialty.
And I think I would echo the same with uh special education student services. And would, my hope would be that we would have some of those very skilled experiences, the, the breadth and scope of student services. Maybe Special Education five oh four, Title nine, um, yeah, and have experience, the experience they bring to the table um through the Bureau of Special Ed Appeals, those things. So, um, my look from kind of the interactions that I have, it, it tends to be the one or two attorneys from the firm that do the special education or student services. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't be as, not as much of a concern for mine from the labor side, because like, that's not what I interact with. So, again, with joy with the availability that the attorney has to address student services needs and their expertise, their student expertise.
The other thing I can mention also, it's been both by departments, things change so quickly. That it is important to have someone who's keeping up on that. And then decisions come through that we may not know of, but they do, and they can provide those to us so that we can be better informed. And so I think that piece is important too.
But I wish to her too. Thank you then.
So, just to add a little bit, I think to answer the question, I mean, I think they, you know, they, the, uh, what both of, uh, John and Joan was saying is that. It's, it's important that they are skilled in their area and that they're available, but to answer your question about needing to be in the same firm, I do not believe that. I don't think it, it actually enhances, I think we need the right people. In the positions more so than having them in the firm, in any firm who gets, they're gonna be different people anyway.
Right.
So, uh, yeah, I'd like to look for the right person.
Andrew.
I'd like to add to that discussion, a point that I wanted to make, and we don't make these changes um frequently, right? No, I was just. Um, but when there are things going on in different areas, it makes making changes more difficult. If they're with the same firm. Um, because you, you might say in one area, I need to make a change. The other area might be working well, and there might be some critical pieces going on, and you can't make a change because of that, it ties your hands a little bit.
That's a good point. Any other questions or comments?
I am thinking, yeah, I don't, I mean, I, I don't necessarily know what direction to take in this. You know, this is, like you said, this is not something that we've done before. We had, you know, a lot of background information, but we also only had very short interviews with people. And it's, it's just very challenging to try and make such, we know this is an important decision, especially those who has had three negotiations, we know, you know, how much time we spend with people, so.
And of course, that, we could take this, figure who you'd like to bring back real quick.
Well, that's fair, I could shake that stuff. Um, but I think, you know, the things that are the, I think the most helpful for, for me is to hear from Mary as to your take are. You know, I, I know, but it's, you know, I, I value your opinion on it. You helped orchestrate the interviews in the first place and came up with those really helpful questions. So, I mean, I think, um, I don't wanna defer to other people, but I think, uh, you know, you're, Lori, your opinion of who, having talked with. Some of these candidates probably more than we have, um, and your opinions of who you think is a good match for the district. Mary's thoughts on that and Joan's thoughts on that, those are the most valuable pieces for me. Not having any giant flags from any of the candidates, you know, they're all, they all seem qualified. Absolutely, they seemed available, they were knowledgeable, they have wonderful um lists of, of districts that they already represent. They've got new districts that they're obviously bringing in new people, people, they're still very well respected, they've got other districts that they've been with for twenty, thirty years. So, you know, there's no giant flag, I, I think for me, I would like to know your opinion, Joan's opinion, and Mary's opinion.
Yeah, I'm not, we're open to that, but it's one.
You said one, one clarification question, I watched it, there's four firms and two of them did both, and two of them were.
So, only one, only one did both.
I mean, one did well.
No, there were two that did both, the only one. One couldn't take on any new, and that's like.
Okay, so two and four, but that, okay, so this is not a motion, but it would make sense, I'm gonna echo what you said about redundancy. If you have two firms, they each handle one thing, if there was a hiccup, the current firm could be a stopgap for you to have a company. As opposed to, you know, two single companies, you lose one, then you have. That's just my take on that.
No, absolutely, thank you. Terry.
To me, it's a very monumental decision, um, and I'm all referring, not, um, because I don't have the expertise. I mean, I know one person that I really liked, um, his answers and his take on it, but, um. And I don't know, do we need to do this tonight, to choose it tonight, or?
So in terms of an overall timeline, so our next meeting is June twenty-eighth. Our current firm is under retainer through June thirtieth. So we wanna be thoughtful about this, but we don't have, you know, an extended period of time.
We definitely want to, because, I mean, yeah, so that other people who write the S R N's can, yeah, sure.
Yeah, so I, I just want to completely echo that, that I think you guys are, you know. I mean, you know other districts, you know who these firms have been working with. I, I feel like as a school committee member, I wanna hear what you guys want as our representation and move on that. So, I feel very strongly about that too, so.
Yeah, I agree. Awesome. Um, I'm, I'm on board with that as well, I just wanna say as somebody who um has decisions like this made for me. By people who don't do my work, um, I would like to just say hi aloud. So, hi, um, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think we're all seeing, you know, that, you know, they have to work with this person, these people, so that is solid. So, that being said. Thoughts?
I mean, they're all highly qualified, and I, I, you know, I reached out to firms that I already knew had excellent reputations in their, in their fields. I, I would defer to, you know, Dr. Durt as the, no, as the chief, you know, and who will interact with both attorneys the most. Um, but I, I think that, um, I think that they're all extremely high qualified, I know that they're all highly respected in their fields. And, um, do I have preferences here and there? I do, but I don't, I wouldn't wanna, you know, bias the decision. So, thank you.
So, um, so we actually have uh attorney Mark Terry and attorney Andy Wong, were the two that we interviewed for the labor side. And then for the, uh, and just recapping, just the, uh, so then we have on the special education side, we have Alyssa St. Florian. Uh, Michael Joyce, and then um Paige Tobin. Um, so there are three uh for the special education. I, I do wanna thank Mary, because she did a lot of background and homework uh around this that I think makes a decision more difficult. Because they have all qualified and it's here. So, uh, working with my team, uh, I decided, I think that, uh, it's very clear that our first choice is Alyssa St. Florian. For the special education um area, that would be our recommendation. It's a little harder on the, the labor side because we've done, done background on both, and I think actually both would be very well, I know that I personally could work with either person. So Andy Wall is, you know, if it's the idea of sticking with the same firm, he absolutely would. I know that I could work with Mark Terry as well. So I know that probably wasn't as clear.
We're getting closer.
As clear on the other side. Yeah, if I were leaning towards someone, I can't even say that, I, I, I can get along with you. I, I think it's more whether do you want the same firm or do you want two different firms? I would say that's what it would come down to, more so than the individuals. Because when we really look at the backgrounds and when we talk to other people for recommendations, both, both individuals really rise to the top.
And I appreciate what you said, Andrea and, and Michael, about sometimes there's an advantage of having two firms. This is a second point, hopefully we don't have to make this kind of decision again in the near future. But there's also benefits to having one firm, which includes, sometimes there are cases where there may be issues that cross over that require both attorneys' expertise. Not always, but here and there, there may be, or so there's benefits to that too.
Yeah, I, I was glad I was here last time, I watched them again. What I really liked about the team two, they had a team approach, so they were talking all the time with each other. I mean, I do agree that it's up to you, it's, you know, your choice, but I also agree that having one, one firm that does it all maybe alleviate some of the problems, particularly if they're all well qualified and there shouldn't be conflicts between them. And you know what, they're the only team to talk about weakness, which I thought was nice. And there, most people, two of the groups said that their, their clients would say they were available, which was nice. But they said that their clients liked them because of consistency. And I thought that was a really polite sort of thing to say. And they also had lots of training of various clients that were all set to go, and they certainly seemed to be kept up, you know, with the news. So it's your decision, I absolutely agree, but this is just feedback from listening to the interviews.
Any other questions or comments? So what I'm hearing is that we're leaning toward group two, the Murphy, Hess, Toomey, and Lehane, the attorneys Alyssa, Alicia or Alyssa? Their choice, Alicia St. Florian and Andy Wall. Is there a motion?
Okay, since I deferred, I'll make a motion. Okay, so, I don't remember the full name of the firm. Alicia St. Florian and Andy Wall, Murphy, Hess, Toomey, and Lehane. As our attorneys.
We'll start with that.
Okay, so we're all here, so all in favor of, oh, oh, so, yeah, I have to stretch enough of that. So I, I think I still, just from experience recently, really advocating for having two separates. And not, especially thinking going into this, that we're building a new relationship and we don't know how that might go. We don't know if we might need to, to make a change. So anyway, that's kind of where, I mean, that's my big tendency, we're just putting all our eggs on the basket.
I can think of you better, Andrea. Is there a way for friendly amendments to use that for the one, and I, and I apologize, the special education one, you said. We can make a friendly amendment just to do that, then, then do one for the other group, so then the discussion isn't bogging down both?
That's fair. So that the amendment would be to motion for Alicia St. Florian for the special ed piece. And then we can also vote on the separate labor, general education side. I think it would have, have to be for the Murphy, Hess, Toomey. But for Alicia only.
But it wouldn't be, it's not, it wouldn't be a motion for her in particular, right? It would be for that firm as a special education firm.
No, it would be for her.
Oh, it would be, yes, yes.
Oh, that, that is our choice.
No, that's, that's fair, I just wanted to make sure that it would be for her, I got you. Okay, thank you.
So we got amended, or?
Yes.
Before we keep amending, could I ask Mary, our expert about law firms? Do they, is that a normal procedure if they have someone in the firm that handles that stuff already?
There are some districts that have used two different firms. Murphy, Hess, Toomey, and Lehane is one of the premier school law attorneys in Massachusetts. They're also located somewhat on the South Shore, their accessibility to family is excellent. They're highly, highly respected, they have an excellent top-notch reputation. They've been doing this for years and years. I think if you look at the client list that they gave and how many years they've had clients, they, they've been doing this for a long time.
And I'll just add, it, it's not unusual to request or hire a specific attorney in the law firm. I don't know if that was part of the question.
Yeah, and I, Bill, I didn't mean to cut off your amendment, amendment motion, but I just was looking at the overall point of view there.
So just a point of order here, because a friendly amendment can't be done, right? Because it has to change, right? So we have to do a full.
It's not a friendly amendment, a friendly amendment means a minor change.
Right, that's what I was saying, that's what I was saying, yes.
Can I withdraw the motion? Yeah, I, I'd like to withdraw the motion.
Okay, nobody can just keep talking. Is that all right?
Yes, however, there.
I have a question, if we really said we wanted to defer to the people who are going to be involved in this, what are, what are their opinions about what they should do? Do they think two firms or one firm would be better? I mean, there's people that would want to, and we're not. And you said we would defer to them, so I think we should defer to them and, and our lawyer.
Exactly, I, I actually want to, for that question, I want to, because I don't, I've never had two different firms personally in, in all my years, but I, I actually can see it either way, right? But I'm not sure about that, so Mary probably has much more.
I think so, I think the, at least in my experience, it's more typical to go with one firm for both. I will say, and, and Mark Terry is, he's got a great reputation too, as does Andy Wall. I think if you look at the years of experience and the number of school districts each has represented though, there's, there's a significant difference. Mark Terry has fewer school districts that he has represented over the years as compared to Murphy, Hess, and the labor and collective are in there.
Yeah, so I have worked in a district with two attorneys and felt that it worked very nicely. I would say the one confusing part for me is that I am trying to do both areas and then I have to involve both firms. And I just feel like that also is an added cost, but I'm not sure if that's the case. But it just seems like it is because I have to, I'm spending time with one and then I have to go call another. Would that be right, that would be?
It would have to be whatever their retaining agreements are, but I, I mean, personally, I do think it will cause some, I don't know if it's confusion, but just disjointedness sometimes and how matters are. But, but as Dr. Doris said, there are, there are districts that do handle like your district, if they have two different firms, it works quite well.
So I would say overall, I've been very happy with it, that there are situations where it does get a little cumbersome of how do you get the two firms involved with things.
How often would it happen, did I ask you off?
No, no.
How often would it happen where we would be involved with the special ed piece and the labor piece? Would that, would that ever come up in the same situations?
Never, it's not happened in before here. I mean, we have one attorney that handles all the special education in our current firm. And the other does the labor relations now. You know, they, they work very well together, I do think they use each other as a sounding board, right? But everyone else would have another person that they could do that as well. I think in the interview, that was actually mentioned that they, they have a team of people, so they could actually use that as well.
Not a reason for asking, because working regularly with multiple law firms in different situations, my own personal job, I know it's very, very difficult to get all of them to schedule a time together, because all of their calendars are, are booked. So, but that's not really ever something that would come up.
Um, so I was just thinking about, you know, the two and, two versus one kind of idea. But isn't it possible that if we were to hire, because I am concerned about things being cumbersome and very common and anything that takes extra time from people that we're paying to do their job and have limited amount of time? So if we were to have one firm and one half of it is going really well and the other half is not, does anything preclude us from dividing that and getting someone else?
Maybe another lawyer within that one firm who does special ed or the collective, you know, the labor side that we could say, look, we're not happy with you, is there another lawyer within the firm that would should take over?
Or even if it's not in the same firm, we could say, look, this is not working, so let's, let's go back to the, you know, the people that we, I, I, I'm just saying, it doesn't, I don't want, I don't want it to feel like we're tied in to both pieces when we might not be. We wouldn't have to just break with the whole firm, we could break with just the part that's not working if that was an issue. Is that right?
Right, and the Murphy, Hess, Toomey, and Lehane, she said there are five other attorneys in the firm that handle special ed law, just as an example.
Okay, okay, you know, if for some reason that was working with her, there are other. There could be another option, but we don't know if they're all accepting. I just, just to clarify though, it's not just special education, right? It's student, student relation and family things, right? So it, it's much bigger than just, so there are areas where it definitely could cover.
You are correct, but the majority is special education. So it falls under the services that would fall under DEA in the, under the auspices of the Bureau of Special Education Appeals.
Can I tackle that?
Yeah, a second, yeah, I'm gonna break that up and then I'm gonna have to ask Mary about this. What I haven't, haven't seen is though the labor relation person and a, someone that's, that's working in student services ever overlapping.
No, only sometime, I've seen a couple of cases where in other districts, there's a contract issue and so they get the labor person in because that person has background on what was happening with contract negotiations that may relate to a special education.
About to do is kind of more clearly defined, I think, when you're talking about labor, like bargaining those things and more special education, those two don't. On a rare, on a rare occasion today.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's just such a big decision. It was very difficult, we learned a lot at the last meeting, but this is where like the actual work happens, is taking all the stuff around, makes me think a lot. Um, do we know if any of the labor firms currently do interest-based bargaining? I know I'm coming up with a question at.
Interest-based, is that right?
Andy did, Andy said that's basically, yeah.
Okay.
He listed several.
And not that, you know, we have talked about maybe wanting to pursue something that's a little bit more collaborative in nature. And I wouldn't want that to sit in the corner, that wasn't an option.
Terri.
Do you think you have enough time talking to the individuals that we'll be working with? Do you think that, I still have trouble with the decision part of it. I'm looking at you, do you think you've talked enough to make a recommendation or could you use more time to talk?
I happen to know the firms, not the individual attorney, so I think, you know, I would defer to Lori, she's, she's been at work and Joan, that will work significantly with them. So what, whatever people they think they're most comfortable with.
Yeah.
Sounds like you guys have talked about this, right?
Yes, absolutely. As a, as a group, we talked about it, yes, thoroughly. And, and Mary and I talked about whether we should go back and, you know, kind of interview for ourselves the firm. And we really came down to the, we didn't feel like we needed to do it. Just to answer your question.
Melissa, I just have a question. Oftentimes, we're presented with a decision that the school committee has to make. And a subcommittee or another team has got together and they've done the work and they've had meetings on it. And they say, you know, this is, we are recommending this to the school committee for you to vote on. Can we, can we put you on the spot and ask you your recommendation, please? Is that appropriate?
I think so, I mean, for saying that they were most closely.
Right, because again, I come back to, I'm not doing your job, although I put in a position where I have to help make a decision on this. And I would like to know what, who you're requesting leading towards, who your recommendations would be.
Attorney said to me recently, not our current attorney, that it's, you know, we don't have to start thinking about who's going to be our attorneys for the next fifty years, right? Those things are kind of over and that we, we can, if it's not working, you know, move, right? So the agreement that, that, that we, we make, so I guess, I know this seems like a very big decision, but I just want to kind of say, like, if it's not working out, then we can make another decision, right? I think it's harder when there's a firm that's been with you for so long, right? That, but if we don't feel like it's a good match when we're working with a firm, right? Then, then we can look at something else. I think the good match is what's absolutely most important. And as a team, our, our recommendation is Murphy, Hess, Toomey, and Lehane.
I make a motion that we take on Murphy, Hess, Toomey, and Lehane as our school attorneys.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing that, thanks, it's a not full conversation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, it's unanimous, right, and we will proceed. Thank you very much, thank you, thank you. So next on the agenda is the presentation of superintendent's evaluation. And this is actually going to be tabled to our next meeting. Part of the evaluation process is that the superintendent gets to meet with individual school committee members and there's been some scheduling conflicts and that hasn't happened yet. So it's sort of an ongoing process, so we will circle back to that at our next meeting. So next is act on policies. AC non-discrimination, ACR non-discrimination policy including harassment retaliation. ACA harassment and discrimination prevention seeking to rescind. ACAA non-discrimination on the basis of sex seeking to report as BCA. ACAB sexual harassment and JICFP bullying prevention. Yes, make a motion to Cali. I mean, hey, questions or comments? I would just, you know how happy I am. And I love that it's like in green there, so I can see it so well. I really, really appreciate bringing in immigration status too. But I think it's still wrong, I can't exactly see. The very top page. I, I don't think the other ones are.
No, just that one is, yeah. Second page, the top, the top one there. Yeah, it is. Thank you, Shelley, for being such a good friend.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions or comments on the statute of policies? So there is a motion to approve these sets of policies.
Just for a point, or the motion is to combine them?
Yeah.
So I think we'll go on that and then we can vote to approve them as a poll, right?
Okay, sure. We can vote to combine them. Um, so is there a second?
No.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, is there a motion to approve the policies with the, um.
On the board, I think we need to vote to combine.
They, we just.
I just, I just want to make sure we don't.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I was sort of going through this very quickly. So is there a motion to approve to combine the policies?
That was.
All in favor? Thank you, thank you for. Now. Exactly. So next, the.
Motion to approve.
Yes.
With all the policies.
With the edit.
Yes. Immigration versus immigration.
Exactly. Thank you. We're all due. Uh, second, that second thing, Yulia. And all in favor of approving the policies? Say aye. That's great. Thank you. So it happens when I have words, so everything gets nibbled. Okay, so. So next batch of policies are BBVA slash BBDB school committee members qualifications slash open office. A school committee member qualifications open office, BBA. People. Of people employment opportunity, GCS professional staff hiring. I.
I think you have them.
Oh, you don't have them?
We. Because it's only one edit. So it's just, it's the, the only edit was this.
So I will keep reading and then we can.
Yeah.
So, um, IJ instructional materials, JV equal education opportunities, JFB school choice, JIC student discipline. And now you can speak to what we're, um, bundling.
So it's just the, uh, the addition of what's in yellow and then we added the edit. So what's in yellow was presented last time. And then the edit was immigration status. Um, so you're, um, voting for the updated on the yellow and then the, uh, addition of the green that was mentioned last time. And that's the only thing out of all of those policies. So that's why I set it up this way.
Right. And is there a motion to approve the?
I'm gonna make a motion to, um, combine all the policies.
I'll say it.
Thank you. Right. All in favor of combining?
Aye.
Great. Yeah, and then I'll make a motion to approve the combined. Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Sorry. Sorry, good for you. Um, so on. The school committee qualifications and open office, um, I had asked that we, um. Look at that one again and make sure it includes things about Cory and turning the course and, and updates in general. So I'm happy to vote for this, um, and, and make this edit, but I would just like to request that it kick back to the policy committee. To revisit and update the number of qualifications for school committee members so that it accurately reflects what is actually required.
Okay, yeah, and the original me was just some highlighted parts, just to.
Exactly, yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure that I put that in here as a request now that we come back to it. No, 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 I'm happy to screen read after the fact. Well, when you're in the weeds, it's hard. Um, you know, primary first round of the course.
So do we have a motion?
We already did.
And that's not fair.
Yeah, so the, the, the motion was just to speak to the highlighted part, but as a whole, Kelly would like that policy to be live. So that was.
So we don't have to go down on Kelly's.
No, no, because that was the part.
We need the policy committee, I'm gonna take it back to the table and make sure.
Thank you. Right. It was the only part we were going on was the highlight.
The edit part, right.
Okay. That was a lot of policy. So where does the policy come in? Is that, is this the end of their? End? Not end, but end.
There's a border. We never voted on this last one.
No, we didn't. That was right.
No, we voted to take them all as one chunk. We didn't vote to.
And then.
Yes, I did.
Well, because we had.
Okay, you voted, but I would say in the middle of.
It was.
So we did, we did, and then she.
I think, but she stopped it for the discussion. So I think you, I think you got your motion and your second. Uh, and then you had a discussion. I think you just have to call for the, uh, the.
Yeah.
Actually, we already did. I, we did, we did. Kelly interrupted. I interrupted. She interrupted it so that she could have a discussion.
Technically, the discussion happened, I think you have to vote.
Okay, so let, so let, let's go back and go since we had a discussion.
Over here.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the bundle. Yes.
Combined.
Combined, yeah, through the policies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. It's unanimous. And then that would have actually gone under the class that I can remember.
Oh, that's what it should have.
Yeah. I think that took it through it.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so discussing committee, school committees, subcommittee roles and responsibilities. So this is the yellow sheet here. And then you also have like teal sheet or something. Sorry. Okay, this is, you know, this is the longest meeting I can ever.
This is pretty long.
Wow. Yeah. Yeah, this feels like a forever, forever meeting. So now we're gonna regroup and focus on our colors. So pink sheet. Is the, uh, subcommittee appointments for this year. And then the teal sheet is a description of the subcommittees and the roles as liaison assignments. That's true.
Yes.
Can I just, uh, say that we have two new committees that have not been made before?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that we, um, added, uh, the health and safety committee, uh, is a district committee that we've had for a number of years. Um, but we would like to have a, uh, school committee member, uh, set in on that, uh, committee. And then the learning access advisory committee is a brand new committee for the district and, uh, that we're starting, um, next year. And we would like a school committee member to be representative, um, at least. So I, I just say, uh, on that as well. And the learning access advisory committee, uh, is, uh, focused on. Our, um, English language, um. Learners are, you know, lead program, our access, uh, liaison, uh, work with the families, access plan. I'm just kind of rattling off a number of things that I feel like we really need to focus on in the district as our, um, Ls are growing. Um, tremendous year over year, so. Bring that forward.
Great, I appreciate that. And also as we're looking at the sheet, are there other suggestions for subcommittees or wow?
We know. I want to go back, I, to this, I believe a point in order that we have to vote to accept any new committees. Just like we had a vote to get rid of other ones.
Right. What I was going to say was if we wanted to, if there are other things that we're interested in, if we want to bring them back, so compiling a list. Of new, we're not voting on any of this. So this is just a working document. So if there are any other, um, subcommittees or liaison appointments that you're thinking of, we can. Add it to this list, bring it back for discussion and then vote on it. But this isn't an action. This is more of a. Discussion, yeah.
Okay. I just don't want to get in trouble by it.
Yeah.
No, we don't have, we don't have a good data in our, tonight, our motion.
I know, just as I put you, the policies just passing through it. But again, with that in mind, um, thinking about any, I saw your hand go up of any additional subcommittees or liaison appointment. Um, yeah, so as, um, and I don't know, did you want to speak to this? Because I, uh, when your hand went up, my.
Oh, you're probably talking about the same thing.
Go ahead.
Um, that for goal two and our continuing diversity, equity, inclusion work. And knowing that we are, uh, gonna hopefully have somebody on board, um, to lead that and then need to have. Um, some type of district committee. Where that work will live, um, and having a school committee representative to whatever that committee ends up being. I, I don't know if there's already a plan in the works, Lori, for like. Uh, a DEI district wide committee or what the new, you know, I, I don't know what you've already envisioned, but I would like for the school committee to have representatives to whatever that committee. Ends up being. A, as we spoke, had spoken, um, before, uh, in the school committee. For one person to be able to do this work, um, is a lot. And so in, in two different, um. Structures, one, we need to build the capacity, um, but I absolutely think that the, um, director of, um. Diversity, equity, inclusion of the longy, um, should have a lot. So, is that, do you think that will be, that's what will be called, like, yeah? Uh, why don't, I mean.
The EI advisor, yeah.
Whatever, whatever. Who could be the EI?
Yeah.
Advisory doesn't, you know, but.
Okay.
You know, I like that long.
Yes.
Melissa, I have two things. One, um, I'd like to reintroduce the calendar, subcommittee.
I'd like to reflect on the.
I'd like to note that, yeah. And then I have another question. Um, when does the health and safety committee meet? Is it like noon time on a Tuesday or?
It's actually eight o'clock in the morning.
It tends to be a zoom call. It is, it has been.
It has been because it used to be all in person, but we can, if anyone's really interested in that, um, actually.
Yeah, but it gets terrific attendance.
Any of them, we can, now we have a skill, we can.
Is it a certain day that we meet?
That's what I did, Patrick, which I think is our.
It's four times, it's four times a year. On a Friday, in the past, it's been on a, on a Friday morning or a Monday morning.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, and, um, along that, so the learning access advisory committee, what will be that?
So, um, Dr. Tyler will be heading up that, um, new committee for us. So I don't know if you wanna. You've thought through yet about, um, how often time?
Haven't thought about day to week or time, but it's once a month, I mean. It's either four, once every six weeks, somewhere in that time period, so you can keep. The work going.
Are parents involved? So would it be like an after-school thing or is it?
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely want a parent.
Like.
Just a question. So to clarify, we should send you individually different subcommittees you want to be on, you compile it.
Yep. Yeah, yeah. So right now, I just want to take a, a list of any suggestions and then, yes, what you will do is.
You'll post an email.
You'll, you'll, you'll email me three or four by June seventeenth and then we'll, um, proceed from there. So any other, to pick me up, any other suggestions for subcommittees or liaison opportunities? Um, we don't have a liaison to, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just have a comment because our affirmative action committee has not been meeting.
Yes.
I really don't know where that is. So I'm, I'm not sure, maybe that we could, uh, pause right now until we know. What's gonna happen with that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Um, and the one thing that we don't seem to have is a liaison to our LPAC. Um, is their opportunity for a school committee liaison to LPAC.
Uh, so LPAC, um. We can, we, just like our, our secret, actually, yeah, you could actually, uh, add that, um, just. Since you mentioned that, I actually think that the, um, a member from the LPAC needs to be on the advisory as well, right? So, um, whether it's the, you know, the, you know, president. Parent that's on the, the LPAC also serves on the advisory, um, you know, looking at the, the broader discussions, um. Uh, so, yeah, so you could, you can do both. I'm just saying that I'm also looking at.
Right. And do we know when that, that group meets?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
LPAC has been meeting fifth quarter.
Quarter. Um, evenings, mornings. Okay, so at our next meeting, two things, we will vote on these new, uh, committees and liaisons. And between now and our next meeting. Email me three or four suggestions or your priorities or where you would like to rest on these, uh, subcommittees and liaison appointments. Um, and again, you can refer to the TO document here that does give, uh, general information about each subcommittee. So remember, I know this is from last year, so things are subject to change in terms of meeting times. Um, obviously your point, Kristen.
Would you like me to add that? I just jotted down from what we just talked about, can we add it to this document?
I would say, let's wait to see if they're approved, um, and then, yeah, and then I will ask, um, the lead, um, on each of these to, or your summary. Uh, next, update by the superintendent.
Um, so, um. Something very exciting. We have, uh, been working, um, over the last several months, uh, with the boss of, uh, tribe education. Uh, Mashpee School District, uh, and Farnum School District in a, um, partnership. And there was a grant, um, that was awarded to the, um. Education department at the tribe. Um, and so we are now, um. Going to be a regular, um, partnership. We'll have leadership meetings that, um, Dr. Tyler and I will. Uh, join with the assistant superintendent and superintendent of Mashpee and then the members of the, uh, tribe education. Um, we, uh. So the purpose is, is to address the, um, academic and cultural needs of our native students. Um, we'll have continuous review, uh, of the data to make sure that we're making progress, um, with the students. Um, that'll be part of that. And with the, the grant that was awarded to the, the tribe, um. Those supports can be put in place, whether we think it's, you know, to embed some, uh, additional PD for our teachers, um, in our. Army, you know, we, we don't know yet. This is very new. Actually, it just all got signed off last week, so the end of last week. So we're, we're excited, but we're, we're getting started and we have some meetings on, on the, the schedule and. Um, we've, uh, talked about bringing all the principals, um, together from Farnum and, um, Mashpee, um, to talk through this as well. So very excited about, um. Yeah, this new partnership. The, uh, our student advisory, we've done on, um, uh, May thirteenth. Um, we presented the, uh, portrait of graduate, which I will refer to you one more time, I believe you have seen it. Um, so we presented this film with, uh, the idea is we let them kind of get familiar with it and, um. And have an understanding of what this is about. And then we asked, um, how are we going to, um. Share this information with all the students? How are students gonna learn what this portrait graduate, um, means? And so, um, I have. We left out our work that we did with our student advisory, uh, so you could see it. And some of the ideas that they had, um, as you can see. Um, you know, creating a Clipper song that, that, you know, kind of.
Did you need the Clipper song? Did you need the tour side?
It's okay. Um, a new song that might be around the Clipper, um, and the portrait of the graduate. I'm just, these are ideas. Um, the, uh. Um, ha- hanging posters around in the schools, making some artwork. Um, that, one of the, uh, interesting was i- is to take this and have it as a placemat on the trays. So that, you know, that it becomes familiar when students are eating, um, lunch. Um, I like the designated learning days by ladder. So it really kind of shows us in on each one. Um, so these are some ideas about how they think that we can make this come alive for our students. Um, so we are gonna bring this back and. And, uh, do some work around it. So that was the student advisory focus and sadly, that was the last one for this year. Always enjoy getting go with them. Um, the listening sessions with staff, um, feedback, uh, once again, uh, it's been very consistent this year. Every time I've, I had a listening session is around the social motion of wellness. Um, a number, um. Feedback that the aperture, um, where we have our resources is, is overwhelming because there's just so many, um, good resources. Uh, that Nancy Ashworth is, uh, working along with John Woodward to, um. Coordinate, um, organize materials around, uh, certain areas and be able to work with the teachers on that to make it a little bit more streamlined for them. Um, and then the, the request for additional support for addressing students', uh, counseling needs. Uh, we had added a new positions this year, uh, and we are going to be adding new positions for next school year. Uh, we will add a. We have a point, we added a point five this year, uh, to North Farnum that will go to a, um, full-time, uh, uh, one, one person. Um, we will, we're adding another counselor to Morse Fund. We're adding, uh, an additional counselor to the bridge program at the high school. Um, so all in all, right now, we have at East Farnum, we have two full counselors. Uh, North Farnum will have two full counselors. T-Ticket has two full counselors and we have a, um, two point six counselors at Long Paul. We have three at, uh. We have three at Morris Pond, three at Lawrence, and, give me a second, one, two, three, four, five. Five at the high school, three is, um, in the general ed, and then two in the road, at the high school, so. But that's been a consistent ask, and we understand that the needs certainly has, has grown. So we're addressing those needs. The student portion of the nature walk is completed while in hall now. The Outdoor Learning Committee and the Rotary Club are the ones that are creating the student walk. And on this walk, they're looking at doing a adult interactive, that will be on the same post, but the QR codes, that's not complete yet, but the student part is, so we're moving along with those. This Thursday, the Mass Association of School Superintendents Annual Spring Meeting will be held, and the focus is gonna be around racial equity, diversity, and inclusion, that they're calling their ready strategies. And so we'll be learning more about that, so hopefully we can report out on those strategies. All right, we're interviewing next Tuesday, our Director of DEI Belonging. And just a brief update on the school choice, we've accepted twenty-four new student applicants. We are holding on eight additional kindergarten applicants until we know better kindergarten numbers, you know. So when, at the elementary level, we accept them in a school choice, but they may, may not get the choice of what school. So we're holding only eight so that we can be watching the kindergarten numbers. I don't see that there's gonna be an issue accepting them, we just don't know yet where they might be, so, so that's a nice addition. And, and Jen will definitely give you a full report in the fall on the, on it. And then our Juneteenth Committee activities have expanded once again. So the continued in district with the author visits for our students and the art contests. The addition of having the artwork put in businesses across all the villages, as well as the Falmouth Art Center and the library. Those are continuing, but we're really growing this collaboration with Arts Alive. Festival that will be the June seventeenth, April nineteenth, so Arts Falmouth, we've really come together with many of our partners, No Place for Hate, the Board at the Kate Burdian Museum Cultural Center. And just looking at those connections for the weekend. So some of the music that we're looking at is the Candida Rose and the Grivaladas will be, they're scheduled, will be there, which is exciting. And then the Kate Burdian Museum Cultural Center will have a display of many of their items that are in the museum itself, will be in the museums on the grid. So, so that people can visit. And so we're creating flyers for the weekend and, you know, how we are really combining our, the arts and the Juneteenth celebration together. So I'll put those flyers out to you as soon as they're complete, but we're really excited how this has grown in both community wise celebrations.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
My backdoor. I've listened to a lot of people, and coming here is a different world. Those folks out there don't know what you're doing here, and what you're doing here is amazing. And I think it's really important, and I know you have, you know, something in the newspaper where they don't read it. Someone said to me, and I think it's a good idea, you know, there's a Falmouth patch. And if you just put, you know, one thing three times a week, and, you know, refer them to where they can read it in the newspaper or read somewhere else. I mean, people have to know that the really incredible great things that are happening here, and it's not communicated out there. At least the people I talk to, I'm sure many people do know, but there are more people who wanna know. And I think it's really important that this stuff is disseminated so people realize what's going on.
I, I appreciate that, and thank you. We have an incredible team that's doing a lot of great work. And I do think the challenge is the communication. Part of it is, you know, even with the newspaper that's that reads, there's a, you know, a certain demographic that, you know, I confident said to me, we don't know what's happening because we no longer have kids in the school system, we, you know, they don't have the same connections. But we still want to read about what's happening, so that's kind of how that started with the enterprise, plus because it gets a thing. The problem is, is being able to keep up with that. It's, and so we have an open invitation for a weekly article, but just as busy as everyone is, that is really hard to do, so. Yeah, I wish, I wish we could do that, but thank you for the other, because that posting something there.
And I, I was told that you, you know, Natalie, you're the one that communicates officially, but maybe, maybe there should be a communication committee.
So, yeah, so there is. Yeah, there is a subcommittee, the superintendent is the one who specifically read it to the day to day.
But the committee could post stuff, you don't have time to sit there and write it all. But if you had members who would be interested in sort of listening to what's happening and just produce it and do the official stuff.
Thank you. So, um, I've actually been advocating for that for many years, not necessarily on the newspaper end of it, but definitely on the social media end of it. I was going to save this until request for further information, but maybe I should edit it back to our reorganization of subcommittees, maybe we need to have somebody that does not just the social media aspect of it, but also the newspaper. Reaches, you know, text, emails the superintendent and the chair of the school committee. What are, I don't know, a couple of things, collaborate with them, these are things I'm thinking of. I've spoke with the other eight members of the school committee, and this is what I have. I didn't know that we had a hold in the Falmouth Enterprise that we could, I had no idea.
Lucky to have them once in a while.
So I, I wish I had known, because I personally would have been happy to help facilitate, put something out there. People ask me often, I know that I'm not the only one who gets asked often, and I think that that we should have some kind of communication, we can't call a subcommittee, but a communication to the community liaison in addition to this list.
And we have to sort of discuss what that looks like, and whether that should be someone that's a staff member or a school project member, since there would have to be very close communication superintendent and things getting approved. So, I mean, that, that's a significant lift, so we have to sort of think about that.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be like a whole, like even just a five bullet, like, what's the school committee up to this week? Like, you could make it kind of like fun, um, fun, catchy, whatever, it doesn't have to be a whole, you know, six paragraph, or, I know we don't have that much room in the enterprise, but like, we could just say, you know, we're voting on the new law firm. We are looking forward to graduation. The Feast of Falmouth is what, like, I don't know. I feel like it could just be, just bullet points, this is what we're thinking, you know, and then maybe that might pique some community members' interest. I don't have kids in school anymore, oh my gosh, I totally forgot about Feast of Falmouth, the ninety-fourth graduation. I would like to go, maybe my spouse and I would like to go and attend that, or, I, I don't know.
Yeah, remember, we had discussed summarizing the agenda and putting it on Facebook. That was one of the things that we discussed doing, so that would be a great initiative to take on and just sort of summarize the outcomes of the agenda from Facebook again, to spark that interest.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Mia.
So this is just an idea, and this might not work at all, because I don't know what this looks like, but I'm looking at our Learning Specialist Partnership and thinking how cool it is that she's building all these community partners. Maybe that is some sort of like blog or something that we could have of just people getting updates, because that would do a lot more outreach to the community aspect of what are those partnerships, and that might really pique an interest for for community members who aren't headed in the schools, but really think how the, you know, building these bridges with the community. So I don't know if that at all fits her just job description around.
I mean, I'm sure, it's certainly worth a conversation, because she does have that firsthand knowledge of everything she's doing. It would be hard for others to mimic that, you know, but I will say, this is a huge job she's doing. And it's just, and some of it's the personality and just jumping in and doing so much for, for the first year that she's here. I just, yes, would like to have a conversation, like, you know, I just, I worry about capacity of, to take, to me. And maybe it's not much capacity, to me, that sounds like a lot, you know, to, to ask, but, you know, I'm not a blogger though, so.
A lesson might not be the major.
But I get what you're saying, the same sense of it, yeah.
It's just like, this was really cool to find out about. The day around the things, because I thought it was really with like, who we and with more oceanographic institutes, but it's.
And it is.
But it's just brighter than, it's greater now, and then how cool is that? I think that you might have people, and maybe there are people who'd interest, be interested in dreading this and volunteering for these types of partnerships that are happening.
I think both of the things, I mean, certainly, you know, you said a list about what's happening, but also specifically, Mary, talk about what grade one did too. I mean, if the community knew about that, that is absolutely interesting, and that's the kind of stuff that shows that the, you know, school is moving in a right direction, and I think that's really important, that, that get out, I don't, I'm not saying how it should get out there, but it needs to get out there.
Andrea, honestly, communication has been a goal for us this year, and I think that this conversation is very valuable. I think it should be part of a much bigger conversation, because stating objectives determines which type of communication, what strategy to use, which methods, who you're trying to reach, and what you're trying to tell. There's a whole wide swath of different things that we could communicate for different reasons, and I think it's prioritizing which of those will have to, you know, be able to be funded by somebody's time, right? So I, I think that we should have this bigger conversation, but all of those strategies are tools that we can use, but we have to put it in a bigger framework.
Yeah, we can add it to our summer retreat. So any other questions or comments specific to Lori's update? Next is routine business approve minutes of May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Yeah, any questions or edits? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the minutes from May tenth, twenty, if you say aye. Aye. Abstention. And next, committee member reports. Karen.
I'm gonna talk about having lunch with Falmouth High School and working with some product, and while I'm talking, maybe how you can share my screen. This is one I want.
Okay.
Okay.
Do I have sharing privileges?
Yes.
Okay, get me here.
It's on, it's online. See, I'm signed in there, so, anyway, you know, there's kind of breakings because of COVID, you know, I was about to say. I always walk away thinking, wow, I'm so impressed with that, so I decided to take a little time and maybe some some students and some of the highlights that I found, and just instead of raving how great it is. And I want to start by saying, the students elected to do this, and they have been discontinued because of COVID. And the students elected to do them orally and presentations, which it takes courage to get out and put yourself out in public, I mean. So I, I told them, even though I can't address all of them, because I didn't go, I couldn't go to class every single day for a week and a half or so, to look at all of them. That I wanted to make known that I thought they were all successful in their projects, because they had voted to put them out there, and they all go out and interview somebody after that. So, so they were successful in not just their subject matter, but what they're doing with them, so. I got to see six over two days' time. Karen Weedy. Aren't I participating?
No, it's done on that side, it's not done on your computer, so I'm working on it.
Okay, all right, the slide isn't that great, it's just the full of information, it's just a couple of pictures that I thought were really. So Karen Weedy did a project on mindfulness, and she said that she was trying to be realistic and how bring it about, and that's the slide I really wanna show, because she said everybody is busy and you can't, when do I have time for mindfulness, so she said, when you're brushing your teeth in the morning, just concentrate on brushing your teeth and, and be realistic, but that's a small start for it, and I thought that was great. And she also, Mary, I don't know, it's Clipper Calm part of Clipper Time.
Oh, it's offered during, a staff member offers sessions during Clipper Time.
So she got some of her, she got some of her friends in classrooms to start using Clipper Time. The next student I wanted to talk about was called, is Deirdre, De- Nicola. She did a project on cultural immersion. My computer. This is, I do want this to have. That's the password from my computer.
Maybe you could explain the slides, we can't share them.
Okay, good, I don't wanna waste a lot of time trying to put up the slides. And lose people's time. Okay, so, Deirdre, De- Nicola did a project on cultural immersion, and her enterprise is now, some students at Falmouth High Schools have made contact with a sister school in Brazil called the Sobrado Por a Sola de Maria, which is in Brazil. Camille Mayte did a project on, she called it Clipper Companions, and what they did in Clipper Companions, and Leah, the one, listen to this, I'm sure, is they paired up Falmouth High School students with ELL students, and they, you know, helped them affirm it. And one of their main goals was to find out what it means to be a Clipper. So that was interesting, but another student named Manny Fenstermaker did a report on sustainability and our climate. And she made another point that sometimes about climate change, oh, it's so monumental and all this, and she said three times in her project, small change, small change, small change, so just keep that in mind when you're using those water bottles that you throw away, so it's like, another student named Sammy Melk, he did a report on the over four hundred and twenty-four thousand fostered children nationwide, and she put a donation box at Falmouth High School to collect for them. And Lindsay Keen did a project on mental health issues and interviewed not just one, but two Falmouth policemen and how they have to keep that in mind when they're dealing with them, they go out in public. And what I want to say about these projects is, the kids are very cynic minded in them, because they look around their community, and the project ends with their global measure, what's their global measure gonna be, so. I'm gonna tell you, next year, you don't wanna miss them, okay, and one last thing. We've been doing so much work with DEIB, now we wanna add that in, and it's a very complicated thing, and we're learning about it, but I thought a very interesting point was, a step further by one of these students, was that maybe we should start looking at our similarities as well, and and all I can say is those kids would be great ambassadors for life, so, did I go on?
That was great, that was really nice, I'm sorry that wasn't.
Yeah, and actually, it's with the slides that come up, because I really was hoping you could highlight everybody. Yeah, and actually, it's with the slides that come up because I really was hoping you could highlight everybody in the class. I hope they all, I said to them, like, they're probably like, letting you make comments. But they all were successful, I mean, just by the nature of what they're doing. Another thing about the high, I want to say about the high school is we got a notice for the Memorial Garden, which is this Friday at three o'clock. And any of you who've ever gone to that, you'll know it's the most wonderful service. The parents of students who died wildly or in Falmouth High School are invited, and I imagine you all seen the Memorial Garden. If you ever looked at the names that go all the way around it, and at this ceremony, the kids plant a plant. They read the names, they introduce the parents, and they actually plant a plant that circles the memorial garden until the end of the summer. So it's at three o'clock, it doesn't last all that long if you're out and about. I, you, it's very moving, and I recommend it.
Thank you so much, Carrie. Any other committee member reports?
Kelly. A couple of things. One, the students loved having Carrie in their class, I heard from firsthand accounts. She was lovely as a observer. And two, the the high school grounds look amazing. There's so much, I'm assuming it's E W. Is it, they weeded and mulched, and it just looks so, so nice, so clues to them for that. And negotiations is still ongoing, we're meeting again next week. And there was one more. Oh, this week. It's been a long week, yes, we're meeting again this week. And.
Oh, congratulations. Is there a link on the fourth, June fourth, if that's correct?
I just want to mention that I went, I had the honor of being asked as to be a chaperone on the art honor trip to New York City on Friday, five thirteen. We left Falmouth High School at six in the morning, and we arrived back at ten thirty, eleven o'clock, I'm not really sure. But I, you know, I chaperoned little kids, and my personal children are not at the high school yet. I was a little, not hesitant, but I didn't really know what to expect, you know. You go from this mindset of I have to count heads, you know, what do you have? Yellow shirt, orange, okay, where's green, okay. And then, you know, you have these students, they're sophomores to seniors, and they're independent, and you're, you know, you're trying not to mother hen them and but still kind of keep an eye on them because you're in New York City. But to see the city through their eyes and to see these young people really appreciate art and know what they're looking for and look for, specifically look for things. And we went to the galleries in Chelsea, I think, yes, we went to the galleries in Chelsea. And then we took the subway over to, I'm getting the timeline. Anyway, we started at the World Trade Tower. That was very moving, and then we walked over to Chelsea, and then we took the subway and over, and then we went over to the Met. And to see the children, students, and how they interacted with the city, with each other, with the art, with the, just the environment there. It was really, it was impressive. I hope to be asked again. I know that one of our goals was to be more in the schools, and no, I wasn't really in a building, but I was with a group of extraordinary young people, and it really was remarkable. So if you have the opportunity, I I, you know, you hear, oh, teenagers today, let me tell you, they were polite, they were kind, they were lovely. They were inquisitive, they were, they asked great questions. And I can't say enough about them.
Yeah, so I got to see the track me yesterday over at D Y. We had some amazing Falmouth High School runners, so I got to be around high school students too yesterday. So I just wanted to say that that was really fun to see all of those high school runners and how great the track team is.
Yeah, I, I wasn't able to be here for our last meeting, I had a good excuse.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, but I want to publicly thank, because I didn't get a chance to do it at that time, Police Heart, Bill Rott, their services in this committee. I wish that I had gotten to know them better, I was only here for a year with them, but I want to say how much I appreciate working with them, thank them for their, for their time because I didn't get a chance to do that the last. I also want to publicly thank the Falmouth Police Department and for everybody at North Falmouth Elementary School for the outstanding work they did about a week or so ago, the incident in North Falmouth. And having been with the police department, with the police department dealing with that type of situation, and also working with the schools in that type of situation, I understand the stress level that everyone deals with in something like that. And obviously, the number one goal that we have every day is to make sure that when when the kids go to school, they go back home and they're safe. And I want to thank everyone for the work they did. Again, both the police department and the staff at North Falmouth Elementary School, and everyone in the district for for an outstanding job.
I agree, maybe for both of those sentences. Any other committee member words?
I think I have one thing, I echo what about the North Falmouth locked up, my my children weren't in school that day, but I heard a lot of stories. So thank you everyone who was who was there taking care of our kids. But one thing I do want to say, I saw Susco at the high school, it was fantastic. And if they continue to put on shows in the future, I recommend everyone go to see them. It was, I was expecting, you know, I wasn't expecting the sets and all the stuff that they did, and it was a very good show, so that's all I have.
Good, thank you for that. I also started that special. Great. And just a reminder that our June fourteenth meeting, we won't have a traditional school community meeting. We will be joining VIPS for their annual appreciation volunteer public school appreciation dinner. Mike and Margaret, I'll send you more information about that, you know, that to you. And we'll also update the website to make sure that that isn't listed as a school community meeting because we will be on the island queen with the VIPS groups for their appreciation event. And Eric, thank you, Ryan, I got a thumbs up from Ryan, appreciate that. Any requests for information?
I have a request. I'd like, the elementary schools, then I'd like to see the numbers at each school. I feel like community members have come to me and mentioned that there is, that it's not quite balanced. And there's, you know, people go in within residents in the town are requesting to go to some schools over other schools, one school over other schools, and the the balance isn't quite there. So I'm just looking for the numbers and perhaps some equity, I guess. It seems heavy. And whereas other schools are lighter, and I just kind of want to have that discussion.
Yeah, so unfortunately, having a school shooting happen today and having amazing response over at our North Falmouth schools, but unfortunately, a community member being killed a couple of weeks ago. I just, I would, I think that the community would probably, and personally myself, and you know, my husband, would really love to hear more about school safety, like what what measures are in place. We know that it worked very well in North Falmouth, but just kind of getting an update as the community around how we do handle these crises that happen. I think that just would put some peace of mind, along with the Mental Health Support Center. I mean, that goes in Canada, but what are we, what are those early signs and how are they being addressed within our schools?
Andrea. We're going to have some longer discussions coming up. I think we have here that we're beginning the process of interviewing for our Director of Diversity Equity and Inclusion Belonging. That, you know, as we wrote to that job description, we talked a lot about an equity audit, and that's part of what that person will be using to focus work. And I would like to continue that discussion about how we're going to, you know, choose a firm to get started on equity audit, how we're going to fund it, et cetera. Any other requests for information? There are motion to adjourn, make a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. You have a great night, thank you, everyone.